Everybody.
Recording in progress.
School Committee's goodness, fifth or sixth meeting of the month. I will call to order this meeting of January thirtieth, twenty twenty five at six thirty four P M. And thank you very much to Wincam for always having, for always supporting us. Thank you. Our agenda this evening, we will begin with public comment. That will be followed by superintendent, chair and student remarks. Then we'll have the consent agenda consisting of consideration of disposal of surplus technology. Consideration of acceptance of minutes from January sixteenth. I'm gonna sneeze. January tenth, January ninth and December twelfth. That last one is from twenty twenty four. The others were from twenty twenty five. Consideration of an in-kind donation from the Winchester Sports Foundation of a portable sports field fence with an approximate value of sixty thousand dollars. And consideration of school committee representatives for collective bargaining with the Winchester Educators Association Unit A. Then we'll move on to consideration of the F Y twenty six preliminary level services budget. And then followed by anticipated future agenda items, next meetings, an executive session and adjournment. So with that. Oh, and Dr. Matthews. Will put where is or maybe joining us a little bit late. So. He is hoping to make it. So with that, let's move on to public comment. And Mr. Hopcroft, perhaps you can help me with that by just keeping track of the list and also being our timekeeper.
Sure, happy to.
And let's see, I have to go and look.
And people should raise their hands, digital hands, I assume if they want to speak.
Yes, if you could raise your digital hand. To let us know if you would like to speak, that would be great. Let me just see.
I'm not seeing any yet.
I do not see any digital hands raised. Give you a few seconds more. And I still don't see any digital hands raised, so I will not read the preamble for public comment and we will just declare public comment closed and move on. Let's see. So our next item is superintendent, chair and student remarks. Dr. Hackett.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I am actually gonna yield my time this evening, given that this is the seventeenth meeting this month. This is the fifth meeting this month. And we're really the purpose for us to get to get through a few things, but also to get to the preliminary level services budget. So thanks.
Yes, and I usually have something to say from around the community, but I think I shall also yield my time. So Michaela, Ms. Jen's, I saw you. I saw you here. Would you like to bring something from the high school or from the school side?
Oh, yeah. Um, well, we just wrapped up multicultural night, which was a big hit. Yeah, it was fun. It was really, really fun. We had a lot of different groups there and there was food and food always makes it great.
Food was fantastic. I loved the Inori sushi.
Oh, that was really good. It was all so, so good. I definitely gained fifteen pounds from that, but it was worth it. On on Student Council is also prepping for carnations. We're handing out flowers on Valentine's Day. So we're starting to sell those. It's where like students can write like little notes to each other, to like their friends. And yeah, we're really excited about that. Thank you.
Any questions from committee members for Michaela? Okay, and I can't, I've had, I'm, I cannot see anything on my Zoom screen, so. Okay, thank you so much, Michaela. We really appreciate it. So. Let's see, and we will move back to the can or we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'd say the only, Mr. Marin, if you had a comment about with the surplus technology or the Sports Foundation.
Yeah, related to surplus technology, this is sort of a process we go through a few months where we're replacing older devices and switches and different technology kind of peripherals that we have. And the process is for you all to both that surplus and we send it away to a company that if there is information stored, hard drives, they certify the destruction of that data. And then they'll recycle the materials there. And we do get a very small kind of payment back for that, too.
I have a few hard drives. Or I have a few laptops that I need to dispose of. But I don't get a pay. I don't get anything back for them.
Yep, definitely. Very small.
That's right.
And then related to the horrible sports field, you know, fence, working with the Winchester Sports Foundation. Their kind donation to order that and for its multiple purpose use for the fields over there.
Just for the committee, I did meet with Jason Capodano, who was the one who was spearheading that. He actually isn't the attendee audience tonight. If anyone has any questions, he gave me the really good overview of it and just the what's what's happening now and the amount of setup. He would be, I'm sure, happy to to answer any questions you might have.
And Dr. Hackett, he's coordinated with Mr. Aria and
And Mr. Marin.
And all and Mr. Marin already. Okay. Thanks. No questions for me, just grateful for their donation.
And then, and well, I was just going to say. With or with regard to the school committee representatives. School committee had nominated. Or I suppose for the school committee representatives for Unit A will have Ms. Bergstrom and me. And then we will have an alternate, which will be Dr. Matthews. So and then I would take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
And then all in favor, Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. So thank you very much. And thank you to the Winchester Sports Foundation and thank you to Dr. Matthews and Ms. Allen for all the work on our minutes. I think we are about caught up on this. Is that very exciting? Let's see. Now we'll move on to consideration of the F Y twenty six preliminary level services budget. Dr. Hackett, I will give that over to you and Mr. Marin.
Thank you, ma'am chair. And Mr. Marin, if you just bring. Thank you. So. This should look very familiar to you because this is what you saw exactly in at the budget public hearing last week. We, there have been no changes to this point to the preliminary level services budget. So. But I think it's important for us to talk a little bit about the timeline changes and also just a little bit about what this budget is and what this budget isn't in terms of terminology. And I would just ask Andrew if he could just maybe run through this slide one more time, just for kind of for the record to make sure people understand the movements that have happened and when the the object, new object codes.
Here. Good evening, everyone. And so a quick recap of what this is showing you here. So the left-hand side, we have all of our orgs. So those are the buildings and then some of the larger departments across the district. And then going across the top, we show you what is budgeted for this current year. So F Y twenty five was proposed for F Y twenty six. And then you have what the difference is there in both dollars and in F T Es. And some of the larger changes, you'll note that in central office is a delta when compared to last year's budget of being lower by almost nine hundred thousand. And that's due to two things. So one is the redistribution of what we budget for column moves. So that's those column increases for teachers who you know, reach a certain amount of credits or degree. And we typically would carry that at the central office level, but we pay it out in their salary line at the school level. And so where we know who those folks are and when it will be reached, when it will be reached next year, we're able to budget at the school level. That makes more sense where that's being paid out. And the second part of that is we typically carry the general ed transportation at the central office level. And that's now been moved to a new org, the very bottom line here, one, two, five, where we're carrying the the sort of the general fund operating portion of transportation. That doesn't cover the total program. The rest is made up through those user fees that we have. And then sort of a smaller change is typically in the I T one, two, one department, we carry both sort of I T, the backend support for the network and those technicians. And also the front end digital learning team. And so we separated out the digital learning team was really the the in-classroom building supports for learning and support teachers and students. And those are now then shifted to the schools of which they support. So you'll see that. And so across the board, you'll see sort of different changes at each of those orgs. And the biggest changes are mostly those column moves and then redistribution of some of those F T Es. And then so on the bottom here, bottom right, the highlight on the top left is that difference from you take the F Y twenty five budget that we're in this year into what's proposed for next year. That's an increase of five point eight four percent or about three point eight million dollars.
If there are no questions for Mr. Marin, I'd ask that you go back to slide six for a second, please. So I, I want to make sure because the processes for us is is new and that we are as we have explained, where we're, we really want to kind of extend the timeline for us. We are meeting the requirements of that the town requires, which is for you to vote a budget to then be submitted to the town manager to for to begin to going through the process of of review by FinCom and Select Board. But as we've discussed, we really need additional time. We want to spend more time with our community in getting more input from our staff. And just so everybody understands what we're, what a level service budget is. There's a, there's a big difference between level service and level funded, right? So a a level funded budget would mean that that five point eight four percent would not exist, that we would be at the same number for F Y twenty six as we are for F Y twenty five, the current year that we're in. A level service budget makes adjustments for us to be able to provide the the necessary level of services to meet the needs of of students without any additional staffing, but with adjustments made where we need to make them. I want to just emphasize that part of where we are right now and the reason why we've asked for or we've, we've, we have really changed our timeline, your timeline as a school committee administration is because there are so many things that happen between January thirtieth and and town meeting. And there will be continued adjustments likely to to the budget that we will need to make. Our intention is to continue to treat the level service budget as a level service budget. And the the resulting work of of the recommended budget and getting to some additional input from community and from staff will be carried outside of of the level service budget. However, we will continue to work internally on the level service budget to make the adjustments that we need. So when we really better understand our enrollment and just get some better projections, which we will be getting some enrollment projections from U S Donahue Institute, we make make some adjustments based on that. We may make some adjustments based on services for multilingual learners. We may make some adjustments for students who who needs additional special education services, who we're not anticipating needing them at this point in time. All of that has to be within the level service budget because the definition of it is that we can, we will be able to go into next year and provide the services that our students need and are required. What it, what this budget does not include is new positions for for anything in terms of program. It doesn't include new positions and and try to address needs that we we know and have already begun to have been identified for us through our staff survey. And in getting at some of the needs that we have beyond just this level service budget. Those discussions will be held outside of the level service budget. We would carry those as recommendations or bring back to you as priorities for discussion for you to eventually vote on your recommended budget, which would be separate and apart from this, the budget that will likely would be brought by the town manager and in the finance subcommittee of the town, committee of the town. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Certainly, if Ms. Bergstrom or Mr. Hopcroft is members of the your, your budget subcommittee, want to clarify anything or speak to any of the timeline changes, I will mute myself.
Do we have any questions from committee members? Ms. Bergstrom. Oh, I see you unmuted yourself.
I don't, I don't have any questions, Ms. Bolanese, but if we could go back to the timeline for a minute, too. Mr. Marin. So just as a reminder, I know we continue to go through this, but as Mr. Nixon has so eloquently told me, you, we tell, we tell you once, we tell you again, we, we tell you again, just remind everybody where we are. We are here in at the end of January, January thirtieth for our vote on the preliminary level services budget. As Dr. Hackett alluded to, we are already in process of designing ways to get community feedback. I'm gonna give a shout out to Ms. Jen's because I may be contacting her to see if she has any input on how we might actually get some student voice around this as well. But that that is going to take place over the month of February. So we are actively in process on this and thinking about this. And hopefully we will have some more information from the budget subcommittee to bring back to you about that at our next meeting. And then as the timeline states here, we will hopefully be able to vote that our intended date is the thirteenth of March for the recommended F Y twenty six budget. And as we know, town meeting will happen at the end of April and beginning of May. So I am also happy to take any questions on that part of the process is the budget subcommittee. Our budget subcommittee meetings are posted on the left-hand side of this slide. They are also public meetings. They are webinar format. So if members of the community or anyone else interested would like to attend those, we will be reaching out to FinCom. As Mr. Nixon had asked in the last meeting to determine how and when we can meet with them about the information as well. Mr. Croft, did you have anything to add to any of that?
I would just add that, um, yeah, I do. I just, to me, Sarah Bergstrom's leadership, you know, I, I feel we've made great strides here. You know, as everyone knows, the school budget is the majority of the town budget and having a you know, having a rushed process doesn't serve anyone. And and so really being able to be thoughtful, knowing that changes happen after our, our January, end of January vote. But also really being able to open up the process and engage our educators and our personal community and get more feedback and really have a more deliberative process, I think, is will serve everyone's interests in in really delivering the services we need to in a, as a responsible manner as possible. So I applaud the the leadership and, and, you know, Mr. Marin and the, and the team have done here and yeah, I, I, you know, I look forward to this process playing out and healthy conversation at town meeting and and the support that we need for educators and students.
And we're super excited to see the feedback from the community and we encourage the participation of the finance committee with us as we continue moving forward. It really is a collaborative process to really be able to bring a town and school budget to town meeting in the spring. And we look forward to just having everyone be a part of that.
Ms. Bergstrom or Dr. Hackett, perhaps you can just comment briefly. I know, I think we had spoken about this in our last meeting. But just how the, how Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin and the school department plan to reach out to the community. I've talked about this a little bit at the different parent associations, but maybe just for the benefit of all. That would be great.
Ms. Bergstrom, you wanna, or Mr. Hopcroft, you want to take that question and I'll?
Sure. We plan to, our plan right now is to reach out to the community through a survey. We hope to be using the same survey tool that has been successful for us within the district. It's the same tool that we use to get feedback initially from the staff. And parents should be looking for that survey to come to them via Parent Square when it's available. And as I mentioned, I'm gonna try to touch base with Ms. Jen's in the next week or so and see if there is a way that's meaningful to engage some student voice in this as well.
And I would, I would just add that I'm very optimistic about the, you know, survey tool that that we have, the the response, you know, from our, our educators was, you know, uh, I'm not sure I have the number right, but we're on the ordering forty percent. You know, I think three hundred educators had responded and fortunate way to really hear the voices of our community in a very good way. So I'm looking forward to a very engaged community and 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 I think that'll be the results. So again, thankful for all the work that's being done behind the scenes here.
And Ms. Bolanese, we've, we've started talking about the, the survey tool is less of a survey and more of a virtual focus group is the way the tool really works. It's not just a question and answer format, but it really engages you both in the topics and in anonymously through other people's thoughts and ideas around the budget. And in fact, the tool is known as Thought Exchange. So.
Oh, good. I'm glad you said that. So I think it's been great. So really looking forward to that. And I think there's been a genuine, a genuine interest from the, from the several PAs I've been to around being able to provide feedback and then also just the open response capability of it. So great stuff coming. Really looking forward to it. And thank you and Mr. Hopcroft and Dr. Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin for all your work on the budget subcommittee.
Absolutely. Though it's in, we appreciate the feedback and I, we certainly really appreciate the extended timeline. I would make a couple more points if I could, if you could go to slide eight, Mr. Barron. One of the things that in with the assumptions that are built into this right now, it, as you know, and as we have talked about, we are beginning our contract negotiations with the W E A, all five units. So we have, we have budgeted for an estimate. It is only an estimate because it's subject to negotiations within the level service budget. We have an obligation. And you have an obligation as a committee to bargain in good faith. That means that we cannot be predetermining what the result of our bargaining will be. There does come a point in time where if we have not ratified contracts prior to town meeting that we will be, obviously, town meeting will be voting a total budget number that we will then have to, that we will then be living within as, as we always do. But I just want to be clear that, you know, we have put in our best estimate. We have, we are, as Mr. Marin described or explained, we have made all anticipated column moves in this budget. Some of those may happen. Some of those may not happen. We'll have time to make adjustments on those as well. But from, from the standpoint of, of what we have put in here and what we're estimating for the result of collective bargaining, that is subject to negotiations. And for us to, and for you as a committee to, to predetermine the result of that and so, and the form of, of, of an actual dollar figure and, and define that now as part of this process would not be bargaining in good faith. And I just want to make sure the community understands. Define that now as part of this process would not be bargaining in good faith, and I just want to make sure the community understands that, as I, I know that you do as a committee. This slide just really kind of summarizes the, the, the two, the big categories really is personnel services and other expenses that is. As you can clearly see, we are, we are, the majority of our, our increase in this budget is, is related to personnel. So with, I, I also want to just say that part of the discussion the committee's been having and we're having a, as well administratively. Is as we go through these next few weeks and we have the opportunity to receive additional feedback from, from the community, from staff. The intention is to work with all of that feedback with also the understanding that. We are looking at this not just as an FY26 budget, we're looking at this as a multi-year plan. So at some point, the committee will need to determine. What among those things that have been identified through that process you wish to include within. The, the recommended budget that you vote in, in March. And what among those things are things that you want to put out on potentially a, a longer timeframe? And I think it's going to be really important for us to, to define those, to explain those and to include those in our presentations. Moving forward with, with both finding a subcommittee, select board, other interested parties as well as the, at town meeting. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that that is a process, that is the process that we are thinking longer term. We recognize that there are, there's our level of needs that. We need to address at some point and we need to be thoughtful and strategic about how we plan for those. I don't know if anyone wants to add anything to that comment. If not, or if there are any questions that happen to answer it, but this slide does summarize the, the budget that. Why you are, we, we are considering tonight, which is the preliminary level services budget. You threw the extra word in the air for me and you've made it more difficult for me to, to pronounce, but I am going to take my time and say it. So we are looking at a budget of seventy million, four thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars or a five point eight four. Percent increase as the preliminary level services budget, I'm happy to answer any question.
Mr. Nixon, I see your hand is raised.
I was just taking the bait from Dr. Hackett, so I just want to add that when we get to those conversations very soon about long-term, multi-year planning, there's no doubt we will have the updated enrollment projections from the UMass Donahue. Institute and that'll very much sort of be a part of that. I am happy to make a motion whenever the committee is ready or when you, Madam Chair, are ready to welcome one, but when I do that, I would like to ask Mr. Marin to go back to slide seven, so we see more of that granular detail. There's a point I'd like to make in making the motion, but I defer to others.
Are there any other comments or questions? Let me just scroll down my screen.
As I say, as a member of the budget committee with Ms. Bergstrom, I'm pretty well versed on where we are, so I'm good.
I was going to say, both you and Ms. Bergstrom are the ones who show up on my screen, so I'm having to scroll all the way down. But I was thinking exactly that.
Dr. Matthews is now here too, just.
Yes, I see him, but he does not have his hand raised. I'll just give another chance, otherwise I would happily accept a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, but I, I just want to say, given the sentiment expressed at the last couple of meetings about how hard our administration looks at every penny, I'm going to make a motion that I hope Mr. Marin and Dr. Hackett. Appreciates. I move that we approve the FY26 preliminary level services budget of seventy million. Four thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. An increase of three million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Or five point eight four percent over the current fiscal year. Made that motion because we have a comptroller and administrators who look at every penny, so that's how it adds up based on this sheet. And I just want to say, I appreciate all the effort administrations put into this and I'm looking forward to that community feedback in the coming weeks. And the budget that we'll be voting, I believe, on March 13th.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon for caring, for covering us on that.
Mr. Marin said last year that he likes everything down to the penny.
And that's what you got.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you, all in favor, Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Matthews.
Aye, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
And Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. Dr. Hackett, you have the preliminary level services budget.
Thank you very much and we'll be packaging this up and including all the relevant backup materials and letter to, to the town manager. By the end of the month. Which is so soon. Like tomorrow, so it won't be tomorrow, it'll be next week. Just checked my dates, yes.
Town, town hall is out at noon tomorrow, so I think we're good reading till Monday.
If it had been open till four, I would have been able to get it in, but I'm gonna have to extend.
That's right. All right, next up is the anticipated future agenda items.
Can I say a word on this, Madam Chair?
I will give a moment, yes, please.
So we can say with full confidence, we'll be in a position. To present the UMass Donahue Institute Enrollment Demographic Report. In February, meaning a final report. We, as part of our contract with them, we have some of their time to, to join us and facilitate a presentation. You and I've talked about this a little bit with the superintendent, so. I think there's, there's an interest and expectation of perhaps a joint meeting with the EFPBC where that information could be shared and we can have some Q and A. I just want to acknowledge though publicly, there are other boards and committees, as we can well imagine, that have a real interest in this, so. Planning Board, Select Board, Finance Committee. I've heard from actually a number of town meeting members who are very interested in this as well, super interested in it. So that's something we'll have to kind of figure out because it's a busy time of year is particularly with this new budget process that we're following with even extra meetings, so. Lots of boards and committees will begin to become very focused on spring town meeting. I appreciate that, I know we appreciate it, but the community is very interested. In this information, so I look forward to maybe through you, Madam Chair, back to the committee, trying to find some. Windows of opportunity so we can schedule those meetings and give, we'll definitely give the committee plenty of opportunity in advance to review the report and pull questions together.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm quietly letting you read through the agenda items for the moment, which are on the screen. In case there is anything else that you would like to add. And if not, then I will just move us on to next meetings, which will be February 13th and February 27th. And then.
Madam Chair, I would, I would recommend that we table the executive session and we've had, we have had. One meeting with WA, but I think it would be, it'd be more beneficial for us to hold until the next school committee meeting. And, and that lines up better with the actual timeline and so we've agreed to with WA for negotiations.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you.
And Madam Chair, before a motion to adjourn, can I just offer one other, we're, we're way ahead of schedule here. Can I just offer, I, I got a lot of notes of appreciation from parents around. The recommendation and the action on the GPA scale at the high school, but I have actually, and this is, is often the case, I, I've also though heard from other parents. Who are actually coming back with some pretty thoughtful questions about how exactly this change is being communicated. To various colleges and universities and their admissions departments, I think that's a thoughtful question. And I wonder if, not for discussion at this moment, because I didn't give Dr. Hackett notice I was going to ask this question, I think it would be helpful. Maybe to the committee and, and, and maybe even actually to some parents at the high school, just to understand. How are we communicating this back and, and what is the message? I think the particular interest is amongst some parents, just so that we're being clear, we're not making this change because we have changed the curriculum, for instance. I think that was clear in some of the parent webinars, but I appreciate that parents are kind of coming back. Just with some questions about how this might. How might this reflect on the, let's say, the rigor of education at Winchester High School?
Are you envisioning, visioning this as a future agenda item, Mr. Nixon?
I'm in, I'm asking. Can I just say? Asking this be a point of communication, can you sort of bring this back to us and, and I'm just sharing, there's interest in the parent community and just understanding that as well, I think it's a fair question.
It is a fair question, I think we, we're in luck because at your next meeting, Mr. Mahoney will be here to present on a couple of the things, so at that point, he'll be able to describe that for you.
Right. Thank you.
Classified under future agenda items, thank you very much. And with that. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved seven ten.
An hour and five minutes away or fast. Second, or, thank you, all in favor, Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
And Dr. Matthews.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody, thank you, good night.
Thank you for an efficient meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.